Okay, we're gonna call this meeting of the Longdale City Council to order. I'm gonna ask the city clerk to give us the real call.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
Here.
Councilmember Suarez?
Here.
Councilmember Kearney?
Here.
Councilmember Reed? Mayor Pullen Miles.
Here. Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Now, we're gonna have our ceremonial portion. We're gonna ask council, now you are, Mayor Pro Tim. Okay, Mayor Pro Tim, James Osborne, he's gonna lead us in a pledge of allegiance. We're gonna ask Pastor Eddie Vargas to, from the Restoration Life Christian Church, to lead us in a word of inspiration.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
If we could just bow our heads for a moment. Heavenly Father, we thank you, God, for all of our council members and our city and our residents, and those that protect us and take care of us. Lord, we know that there have been difficult times in the past, but, Lord, we just pray a blessing for everyone's family and protection and provision in 2019. We thank you for being able to gather together. We just pray over everyone in our city, Lord. We pray that you continue to protect and guide our youth so that they can grow up and be amazing future leaders. We just thank you for this time tonight, in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Thank you, Pastor Vargas. Okay, before we have our public safety report, I'm gonna move without objection item number K for a later council meeting, so we're gonna be pulling item number K. Excuse me, not, yeah, not, not K. I did write K, but it's not K. We're gonna pull the German, the closed session. We're gonna pull a closed session. Okay, we're gonna counsel closed session, which is item number nine, actually. Okay, so we'll counsel that closed session tonight. Okay, so let's pick up the agenda. Let's pick up our public safety report. Let's have our captain, Tardy, give the report.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the city council. I'm here tonight to present the public safety report for December 17th through January 6th. On December 22nd, Deputy Justin Sabatine responded to the 4,500 block of 159th Street regarding an assault with a deadly weapon call. Upon his arrival, he saw a male adult bleeding profusely from his forehead who was being treated by paramedics. The victim said he had been confronted and attacked by multiple suspects. The victim identified one of the suspects as the brother of his ex-girlfriend. After the confrontation, all suspects then fled in different directions. The investigation is ongoing and arrests are pending. On December 30th, Deputy Leonardi responded to the 4,500 block of 173rd Street regarding a meet-the-woman call. Upon his arrival, Deputy Leonardi recognized the female as a previous stalking victim. The victim was visibly upset and added that her husband had been stalking her and had broken into her apartment numerous times violating a restraining order. They had been separated since 2015. During this incident, she was awakened when she heard someone attempting to enter her apartment through the kitchen window. As she walked toward the kitchen, she saw her husband inside her apartment, and he fled the location. Deputies located the suspect and detained him. Prior to placing him in the rear seat of the radio car, deputies retrieved numerous baggies of an off-white substance resembling methamphetamine from his person. The suspect was arrested for stalking, violation of a restraining order, and possession of a controlled substance, and probably burglary. On January 2nd at 11:30 PM, Deputy Sean Groves responded to Longdale High School regarding a burglary just-occurred call. The call was updated and two suspects had been identified by security and were seen running from the location. Deputy Groves, along with assisting deputies, searched the surrounding area. He observed one of the suspects running on Rosecrans Avenue when detained him. The suspect immediately stopped running and apologized. The suspect had stolen laptops along with Longdale High School sweatshirts, pants, and socks, which was still in his possession. The second suspect was also in possession of Longdale High School clothing and was detained a short distance away. The suspects were both positively ID'd by school security and arrested. Wanted to give you an overview of 2018. We did a phenomenal job. We ended 2018 down 23% in Part I crimes, and I attribute that to all of the residents in Longdale. Thank you, Longdale residents, for your patience and understanding. Sometimes we get it right sometimes. I want to thank all of the city council members, Mr. Mayor, Tiffany, Steve, all of the staff here for the city of Longdale. This is my final report as your captain of South Los Angeles Station. Okay, I got a little emotional, but I want to thank you all for your support. And this concludes my report. If you have any questions of me.
Is there any questions of the captain's report?
So Captain Tardy, where are you going?
I am going to be the commander over Central Patrol Division, so it still includes the South Los Angeles Station.
It's a promotion, Pat.
Well, we want to congratulate you on your promotion.
Thank you.
You've done such a wonderful job as our captain, and we just really appreciate your hard efforts here in the city of Longdale and just being a part of our community, and we wish you well. We'll see you, I know I'll see you probably in my other role because you're still gonna be over this area, and so we just appreciate you. And with crime down 21%, this is the time to drop the mic. You know, if there was any other time to drop the mic, this would be a drop-the-mic moment. So we want to say congratulations to you.
Thank you. I want to thank Sergeant Sandy Nitz. He's been stepping up to the plate now that our lieutenant is gone and now that I'm stepping away, so I am leaving it in very capable hands, so thank you very much.
Congratulations, April.
Congratulations.
Is there any items from the city clerk's department? Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mayor. I just wanted to remind the residents that currently we're accepting applications for all committees and commissions that we have here in the city of Longdale. The term is for two years, and the beginning of the term starts on March 1st of 2019. To get an application, you can either go online, take a look around, there'll be, you can get to know what kind of commissions and what the service, and you can apply for multiple commissions if that's what you're choosing. Applications can be picked up here at City Hall or on the website itself, and we look forward for people to step up and to volunteer into the city of Longdale. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item on the agenda is oral communications. Oral communications, where you have the opportunity to speak to this body, being the Longdale City Council, on items that are not on the agenda. If you would like to speak to the Longdale City Council on items that are not on the agenda, we ask that you line up by the flag. When it becomes your turn, just come to the podium. If you would start with your name, at about two minutes, the amber light will come on there to give you the signal to start wrapping things up. It's up to three minutes. Yes, yes, sir. Right on up.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and City Council. My name is Daryl Hatch. I want to thank you for the opportunity to speak this evening. I've been working at the Los Angeles County Sanitation Districts for 18 years. I'm a supervisor of our sewerage system. We operate and maintain and convey the wastewater in the sewers from the city of Longdale to our treatment plants. I'm an American Federation of State, County, and Municipal Employees member who's speaking on behalf of nearly 1,000 fellow employees across six bargaining units of the sanitation districts. AFSMI also represents employees at the city and at various cities, counties, and municipalities across Southern California. We appreciate the good working relationship we have developed here over the years. As you may know, the sanitation districts oversee a vast infrastructure of solid waste and wastewater operations for 78 cities, including this one countywide. Our work in science and engineering is vital to both public and environmental health. The workforce takes great pride in the industry and the recognition we receive year after year for delivering world-class services as well as exceptionally low rates to residents. For example, the Orange County Sanitation Districts charge their ratepayers nearly double of what we do. So you might be wondering what has brought me here. I'm here due to the unfortunate fact that the sanitation districts are embroiled in labor management turmoil, and our longstanding impasse and negotiations could spill over to the communities that we serve, including this city. Despite the excellent work and service we provide, the sanitation district's negotiating team is attempting to cut our total compensation for no good reason. Over the course of our negotiations, impasse, we have been through both mediation and fact-finding. The fact-finding confirmed two very important facts. First, the districts can afford what the sanitation district workers are asking for, and second, what we're asking for won't increase rates at all. Not only are the districts attempting to hurt its employees without financial or other good justification, but they are attempting to bully us into submission by holding our last two years' cost of living hostage, even though they have already collected the money to pay for them. The fact is that numerous cities across the districts, including this one, have negotiated for employee payment of their pension contribution and offered them a corresponding raise and a little bit more for a cost of living. To be clear, we are willing to pay our fair share, but we are not willing to be abused. In two consecutive polls of AFSMI membership, the majority said that we would not accept the district's arbit-
Yeah, just wrap it up for me, please. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
Excellent job. I have had to call the night a couple of times for our street, our block, and they're there, and they're doing wonderful work. Parking. As I understand it, prior, there was actually something in our code about the size of a vehicle, too, the width of a vehicle. Don't know if that's still there or not, because I really didn't take the time to look, but we have multiple lovely duly trucks in our neighborhood that stick out in the road. I mean, our streets are already narrow and hard to pass, but then you've got them parked up and down the road. It's difficult to get past. Then, of course, they park like jackies, and so therefore, people can't, you know, they take up way more room because they don't pull up to a certain point. They stay back and nobody else can park, and it's just really a shame. So there's that one. Then, I believe, the last meeting, I spoke about the fact that we just started with the auxiliary units a couple of years ago at best, and parking has always been an issue in this city. I understand auxiliary units do not need to provide extra parking, but all these others were built in a timeframe that there were building codes in place where they had to put in a garage, they had to put in a driveway and so forth, but yet Longdale does not require them to provide parking for their units. As I see it, you know, listings for rentals and no parking provided, street parking only, and that's a shame because there, those places were built with parking. And I realize we've all got more cars now and everything else, but they were built with parking. Therefore, these property owners should have to provide parking for their rental units. I don't understand. We've got people charging thousands of dollars for little crap holes, and yet not a parking space one for them? That's sad. And all these people that are parking their vehicles, and when the Santa sleigh was going through town, I know for a fact it went down Firmona, and there's that red Dodge pickup truck blocking the sidewalk. We have multiple people in chairs in our neighborhood, multiple people. Well, so they're gonna have to go out into the street in the-
Randall Abram. Despite a small increase in the number of Airbnb rentals in Longdale, there still is a need for widespread notification that this is illegal. The Longdaling is not sufficient notice. The city could utilize its electronic billboard to advise landlords that this is illegal or add signs to the street parking signs. A look at the Airbnb map today shows at least 15 to 20 units still being advertised in Longdale. These are advertised as being in the desirable Monaco area of Longdale. Obviously, these people know this is illegal in Longdale and are ignoring the law. The listings shield the actual addresses until the rooms are booked, but they blatantly advertise they're located in Longdale. One of these locations has 20 reviews that date back to February 2018 and continue to this last month. Another listing advertises as LAX, Southway Sanctuary, close to Everything in Longdale. This one had 72 reviews dating back to 2017 and continued until this month. Many of the others have reviews dating back to 2017. Many are not new businesses but have been operating for a couple of years. I was advised previously to report any that I've found. When the city enacts a law, it needs to follow through with enforcement, or what purpose is there in enacting laws that have no teeth? If and when someone is illegally operating a business and my neighborhood is impacted, I have no problem reporting this illegal activity or any illegal activity, but this is not my job. Residents have every right to believe that their elected officials are enacting laws, and people hired to enforce these laws do their best to the best of their ability. Ignoring the Airbnb problem is irresponsible. This information is readily available with a few small searches. What I'd like to see is a report that provides me with actual figures on the action taken against these illegal businesses. I was told that some action was taken, but every day when I drive past these known rentals, they are still in business. Some of the ones reported months ago are still advertising rentals. As these owners can still be contacted via email, a notification could be sent by code enforcement advising that this is illegal in this area. Could Longdale also not notify corporate Airbnb that short-term rentals are illegal in Longdale? These short-term rentals not only impact the parking issues in Longdale, but take away potential tax revenue from hotel stays. These people are operating in the city without any of the fees other regulated businesses are required to pay in order to establish themselves in Longdale. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Jeanne Frannick. I've lived in Longdale for almost 50, over 50 years, actually. I thought I had four minutes, so I'm gonna be cut. A couple of years ago, there was a very serious double arson attack on my house, and because of the mishandling of the situation by our sheriff department, I'm still suffering the consequences. The residents of the particular address believe they continue to be abusive. On October 27th, I wrote yet another letter to the landlord who lives in Palisverdes. By November 7th, the residents had retaliated by sending animal control to my house to investigate the cruelty of dogs and cats. I don't have children. My pets are my children. I worked with animal rescue, specifically with pet bull rescue, for many years. There is absolutely no doubt in my mind that these people are the ones that sent them to the house. Meanwhile, my mother recently passed away. I'm clearing out the house, it's 70 years of stuff. My niece has been hit with cancer, and while she was in medical school, my emotions are raw. When animal control came out, Officer Greer apparently thought I was pushing back against his authority. I wasn't. I was just terrified my dogs would be taken away from me by yet another lie from that house. When he came out and after our first conversation at the office over here, he came out to my house, he decided to bring code enforcement with him. There was a rocking chair, rake on my porch, a couple catalogs, and my number was gray, not black. I've changed it all at her request. I commented that I was gonna be doing a bunch of construction, getting ready for construction. She heard the word, this is Officer Rodriguez, as "construction" and thought I was talking about major construction. I meant windows, paint, roof, doors, et cetera. Because of the time, I won't go into all the details with my conversation with her or with, I came to the office to speak to somebody. She did not introduce herself. I don't know if she was a supervisor or what. She's at the corner office, and it, the whole thing, it did not go well. I didn't feel anyone was hearing me or understanding what I was saying. I've completed the request by Officer Rodriguez, except for the SAD evaluation, which I don't think I need because I'm not gonna have construction done. I planned on fixing up the house and spend the rest of my life there. It is extremely important to put in a major security system on top of everything else I'm doing because it is my only hope to stop the abuse that is coming from this other house. It has gone on for over almost 15 years. My problem is I'm in the process of pulling a reverse mortgage. I plan on using that money to fix up the house. They use FHA, Federal Housing Inspectors. The city pulling code violations on me right now can stop the entire process. I have an autoimmune disorder, I'm disabled, and there's no other way for me to stay.
Wrap it up for me, ma'am.
That's time.
Go ahead and just wrap it up. Wrap up your words for me. Okay, let us take a look at that for you, if you don't mind. Hand this fella right here. Okay, I'll have a little conversation with you on the side right after this, if you will. Thank you for your comments, though. We'll respond to all the comments in a few minutes when everyone has a chance to speak. Yes, sir.
71st Street. Just to let you know, I am probably the most computer-alliterate person in this town. I still carry a pager, I still have a flip phone, but going on the computer, I just type in Airbnb, Longdale, bam, and that it's not legal in this town, there should be something done about it, I guarantee. You guys know, if it was me, it'd be like white on rice, and that, so I think we need to crack down on it and stop it because it is illegal. And then the other thing, I saw a commercial, and I got real hungry. Maybe we could put a Cracker Barrel on the corner. Thank you.
There you go.
Marge Heineman, that's the shortest I've ever heard him speak. First of all, congratulations to all of you that have been re-elected. Good luck. Okay, he's already spoke on what I'm complaining. No, I'm not complaining. I'm stating a fact. I'm tired of bed, air, bed, and bath.
We know what you mean, though.
If you live across the street from one, and a bunch of teenagers take it over on a Saturday night, and they're drinking, and they're partying, and the cars are going up and down, it has a tendency to upset you. I'm upset. I brought this to attention before, and I'm asking you guys, if you please go into this, I know there's ordinances against this. It's an empty house that's rented by the night. I think there's something seriously wrong with that. So help me out, and that way I can come back with good things. And my good thing is, God bless you all, make our city stronger, and make me happy for a change. Take care.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Okay, at this time, we're gonna close public comments. I'm gonna bring to the diocese for any comments the councilmen would like to have.
Dan's first. Oh, he's not here, so I have to start again. Code enforcement. The parking of oversized trucks, we can look into that, correct? I know there-
Yes.
Okay.
I'm sorry.
I'll let you speak about sanitation district, remember. Airbnb. We can go online, maybe we can have our WizKid on the computer go online and get all the ones we have in Longdale and start enforcing that.
Yeah, I do know we have a number of open cases, and yes, I know, Michael, if you want to add anything more to that at this moment.
Just simply to say that, to begin, that would be proactive rather than reactive to go and begin searching Airbnb. Are we concerned to do that?
Absolutely.
If anyone around, but to do that, we'd be opening cases based on our own observations rather than complaint-based.
Because I know Bernard and I know there was one. Lynn, Sean Moore, Michael Reyes, these are two you want to talk to after the meeting. Michael Reyes, Sean Moore. Johnny, we'll do everything we can about the illegal Airbnb, so what'd you call them, Marge? Bed Bath, Bed Bath &amp; Beyond, or whatever it was.
What does B&amp;B stand for?
And with that, I'll pass it over to my colleague to write.
Thank you, Councilmember Kearney. Thank you to everybody that came out tonight. I think you touched on pretty much every topic, but I did want to add, is it possible to contact Airbnb and flag it as they, you know, that the city does not allow Airbnb?
I believe we've had discussions in the past. We can do this again, absolutely, provide them with our ordinance and ask them to restrict the operations within Longdale.
They generally don't care.
They don't, but we can do it again. You're right, Tiffany.
Okay, well, that was the only question.
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, thank you to everybody that came out. I'll pass it along.
Mayor Pro Tim. James Osborne.
Thank you, Robert. No, you guys covered everything I was gonna cover, but the one question was when it's, I heard Daryl ask about divulsion of public enforcement, but I've heard from you so many times over the years, that's confidential. We can't say what's going on with any investigation. I just wanted, if you wanted to echo any of that or not. But I did hear Steve say that there might be, even though it's futile, we could still reach out to Airbnb again. Send a nasty letter?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Can we also send a letter to the homeowners?
Well, right, that's what-
perpetrator.
Does, but as Michael was pointing out, typically, the council only wants staff to be reactive, so we wait till an address is reported to staff and then they investigate it. That's why they don't just look on the computer and see what the listings are and go after them.
And without giving addresses, how many cases would you say involving Airbnb have you been involved with in the last year or two?
I mean, I don't think any have gone to my office, but I don't know.
There's been a few, though, right?
There are a few currently. I could, just from the top of my head, I've only been here about three and a half months now, but at least a dozen, I would say.
A dozen, okay. Probably be within the last year, then.
Complaint-based, though, some turn out not to be Airbnb.
My neighbor complains, there's parties going on at this place, gets reported.
Long-term rental.
And staff's investigating it.
Sure, so even though they'd be coming in as an Airbnb.
Well, it gives us an idea, there's about a dozen of them going on. Open cases, right?
Okay, that'd be all the comments. I think we touched on all the comments there, so we'll just move our agenda. Next item on the agenda is item G, which is the consent calendar. What is the pleasure of this body concerning the consent calendar? There's five items on the consent calendar.
No question, I'll make approve.
Hang on a second.
Okay, motions, okay, motion's been made by Osborne and seconded by Kearney. Is there any discussion on the motion?
None.
Okay, will the council please vote on the consent calendar?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Reed absent.
Thank you, Madam City Clerk. Next item, item number six regarding the update of postings for ordinances. Let's have staff report.
Honorable mayor and councilmembers, this first reading of the ordinance before you would update the city's official posting locations. Currently, the city has three official posting locations that are not freely accessible to the members, to members of the public, meaning the agendas are not in a location accessible to the public 24 hours during the mandated 72-hour posting period. To comply with the Brown- To comply with the Brown Act, in addition to the official locations, the city clerk's office has been posting by the municipal services department, which is accessible to the public twenty-four hours a day, although is arguably in a relatively hidden place. If approved, the office of the city clerk, clerk would procure a large posting board and have it installed in front of City Hall. This would give the city a centralized, fully accessible posting area, available for all of the public to view at any time. This concludes my report. I can take any questions you have.
Okay, if there's any question to the staff report.
I just typed out a comment.
Sounds pretty good.
Long overdue.
Okay, so there's an, an ordinance resolution. Okay, so what is the pleasure concerning six? So we'll have to make a motion.
Second.
Motion's been made by Osborne and seconded by Pat Kearney. We need to...
Yes, please. This is ordinance number one-one-five-two-dash-one-nine, an ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, amending Lawndale Municipal Code Section two-point-one-two-point-zero-eight-zero pertaining to the required posting locations for ordinances, resolutions, and notices. Thank you.
Okay, will the council please vote?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Reed absent.
Thank you. Item number seven, moratorium on motorized scooters.
I'll be presenting this one, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Council and the public may have noticed lately the proliferation of commercial motorized scooters around different areas. Lately, staffs have been finding a lot of these in the city. Unfortunately, there are no state laws that regulate them, and right now, our code doesn't either, so we would like this moratorium to put a ban on those scooters, which are being left on sidewalks, which creates a public safety issue and, and ADA issue, because it precludes access in some places. This would allow staff the time to work up zoning regulations that the city can put in place to regulate the time, place, and manner for where these may be used, or possibly to prohibit them completely. So to do this, we're requesting that the council adopt today an urgency interim ordinance that would be in effect for forty-five days. Before that forty-five days runs, which would be before the second meeting in February, we would come back to you with a notice, public hearing, to extend the moratorium. At that point, staff would make a report on what progress has been made and what work still needs to be done, to allow the moratorium to continue for up to another ten and a half months, while the zoning ordinance workshops through the planning commission and then comes to council for adoption. Please let me know if you have any questions.
Well, my question was gonna be kind of a simple question. What's the emergency?
Staff's finding these all over the place, and right now, we don't even have the authority to seize them, because we don't have rules about it. So you need, like shopping carts, you have to have rules in place saying how you're gonna seize them, how you're gonna notify people that you seize their property, and things of that nature.
So we can't collect them now, even if we get a report from a resident just blocking the sidewalk, unless we have this moratorium in place? If I understand you correctly?
I think we've just been putting, have we been putting notices on them that they're not?
At this point, we haven't taken any action on the...
Right, because we don't have rules saying they're not allowed.
Future preventative measure.
So this would allow us to put a notice on them that they're currently banned, and that we're...
So if a business on the boulevard, you know, their customers are tripping over this thing that's been left in front of their business, because I see this, like in Playa Del Rey and El Segundo, you see people falling over them all the time.
Right.
So currently now, if a resident gets on their phone and says, hey, this thing is blocking the doorway, there's a whole pile of them here, we legally can't do anything.
We can't seize it.
Until we do this.
Yeah, you can't seize them.
Right.
Right.
I understand.
You can't seize them, but you can remove them from the public right away, or from the, from being a trip hazard. My question is about the emergency part. This is asking us to adopt this as an emergency ordinance, basically. That's my, that's my question. I, I do understand that we need to have regulations regarding such, but my question is whether or not it rises to the level of an emergency.
Well, that would let us immediately start putting notices on the ones that we see, letting them know that they're not prohibited, and that the city's studying the regulations on them. So that then, once we do have an ordinance in place, if, if we allow them, it would include a process to seize improperly parked scooters.
I, yeah, I understand what it'd allow us to do, but I'm still wondering, is that the first hurdle you gotta get over is whether or not it arrives to the level of an emergency? I, I just don't know. I mean, I, I walk around every Saturday and Sunday, and I probably walk around this whole city. And maybe they don't do it on Saturdays and Sundays, but I haven't really seen the, I've seen maybe two or three where people actually riding them, but actually impeding the walkway or what have you. And that's just me, maybe, just because I have, just because I miss them, don't mean they're not there. I'm just saying, if it was an emergency, it seemed like I probably would have saw them as much as walking as I did.
I think it's just, just the language that they're using, Robert. You're right, they're not, they're not all over this city yet. But I, I saw it firsthand in Playa Del Rey and then the beach cities, where the company just comes in and they just, they just leave them, piles all over the place in public right away. And, you know, some kids will use them and some other people. And then if they're not being used, they kind of become an eyesore, and there's a lot of people revolting against them. I think this word, emergency, I don't really have a problem with it, because I think they're just using that as, let's take action right away. So.
What prompted this was, we have noticed them on Hawthorne Boulevard.
Yeah, I saw a couple.
And the concern is that they will continue to grow and have more and more, and, and so we looked at this, and this is why it's brought forward today, rather than waiting another, you know, basically, three months to do the second, first second.
Three months or longer. Yeah, as, as Jim was saying, that's the point, is that calling it this emergency interim ordinance allows you to put these places in place tonight, whereas otherwise, you'd have to go through the process of the planning, staff's working on the rules.
Preventative action before it becomes a big...
Right, all the public hearings, which takes at least...
Let me see, anyone?
None, it's just I think we have some comments.
Okay, let's, okay, let's take a couple of speakers.
Ms. London, I spoke on this before, and you see the kids riding them, no helmet, no protective gear whatsoever, so, you know, crack your head open. It's not like I care, but they're not my kids. Other cities do have ordinances and laws and whatnot in place about riding the electric vehicles, requiring helmets, and some of these companies have even stepped up and provided helmets, but not here, because there's nobody saying you've gotta do something. I've heard they had a buttload of them dumped in Redondo Beach, without Redondo Beach's permission either. So obviously, ride it in Redondo, drop it in Lawndale, and hey, yay, we've got them now, too. I've seen them on my block parked. What's to prevent me if, I'm, I'm just asking, if they're parked possibly in my driveway, can I just put them in the trash? They're on my property.
I mean, what you can do is different than what we can do, because it's public property. If the public, if the government were to act, it would be an illegal seizure and violate the Constitution. If someone leaves, abandons property on your property, you decide what to do with it.
Okay, well, I just, just wanted to make it, you know, make sure that I know what I can do, because certainly, if it's in my driveway, I do have trash receptacles, and I will use them. I love recycling, and I know there's a lot of plastic on there. Yay for me. Yes, so y'all remember that, where to go. Bye.
Hello, Johnny London. I work all over LA, from downtown LA to Santa Monica to Pasadena, Santa Clarita, you name it, I've been there. These things are not only an eyesore, but they are a hazard, because they're left on, not only just on Hawthorne Boulevard and that, they're left in the residential zones, too. And they're left in the parkways, they're left in the sidewalks. Like I said, I've worked everywhere. I've seen them in neighborhoods, I've seen them on busy streets, I've seen people just hauling butt downtown LA, from the street right onto the sidewalk. People that ride them, you know, it's, some are cautious, a lot of them aren't, in that they could run somebody over without a moment's notice, especially going down the street, these high-brake cars. When they're in reverse or forward, you don't hear them. Someone pulling out of a driveway, this guy's hauling butt down the sidewalk on a scooter, next thing you know, bam, they're, they're hurt. And whose fault is it? And that, I, I think they're an eyesore for the community. I don't think we need them. If Playa Del Rey wants to keep them in Venice, in these little beach communities that think they're okay, great for them, but I don't think we need them in the city of Lawndale. I'd hate to see them in the front yards, because honestly, a lot of people that rent them, they don't care where they leave them. They know they're getting from point A to point B, and boom, they set it aside. And that, so they're not concerned about the neighborhood or the streets that they're leaving them on. So please don't let them get us. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you.
Yeah, this has been, every city's had to deal with the same issue, some much worse than ours, but we really didn't get the piles dumped here, so it's, it's good that we're sort of being proactive on this.
So no further questions, I'm making a motion to set staff...
I'll second the motion.
Now, what's, clarify your motion.
Okay, the...
To enact the moratorium.
Call staff recommendation to adopt interim or urgency ordinance that number eleven-fifty-three-nine-nine-dash-nineteen.
You don't have to be that clear, but...
Do you have to clarify that this...
So the motion's been made by Pat Kearney.
It would have to be unanimous vote here, because it's a four-fifth rule.
Right, because it would be, if four-fifths is required to adopt this, it would require all of you to...
First, I gotta make a motion. Motion been made by Mr. Pat Kearney, seconded by Osborne. Will the council please vote?
Would you like me to read the title?
Please read the title.
This is an interim urgency ordinance of the City Council of the City of Lawndale, California, establishing a forty-five-day temporary moratorium on the operation of motorized scooter programs within the city, and declaring, declaring the urgency thereof. Thank you.
Okay, will the council please vote?
I did. What's the matter with the machine?
Motion approved unanimously with Councilmember Reed absent.
Thank you, Madam. Okay, next item on our agenda. Item number eight. Oh, I wrote down item number eight. Items to councilmembers, the mayor.
I have nothing.
Nothing?
Nothing.
Counselor on source.
I have nothing to report, just want to wish everyone a Happy New Year.
Here, here.
Mayor Pro Tim Osborne.
Yeah, I don't think there has been any events or meetings or anything, so, yeah, nothing.
And I have nothing as well, but I also would like to wish everyone a... Oh, you know what, I didn't comment on the sewer. I did, I did want to comment on the sewer. Thanks for reminding me. This is unorthodox, but we, we let this one go, but at the next council meeting...
Talk about it next time.
That we know about the, the issues with the Asme employees, and there, there are a few allies, I wanted to just let you know, a few allies at the sanitation district who've heard this issue and learning more about it. I happen to be one of those allies, by the way. And so we'll, we'll definitely take a look at this issue, because this is an important issue. I'm on, I'm on the board, but everyone has the right to weigh in. That's what they would like for them to do. Okay, I was gonna say something before I was reminded of that.
Maybe adjourned?
Okay, but before we adjourn the meeting, we do have a question I want to read, but... Okay, yeah, we closed, removed that one. Okay, we're gonna adjourn this meeting in the memory of Wayne Wong. Wayne was the vice president of the Lawndale Senior Club. It's the travel club all the seniors, a lot of the seniors participate in. He helped to sign up all the seniors, as well as escort some of them on the senior tours, tours. He was the, the go-to guy for all the computer functions. He was apparently good, very good at fixing the computers, so he was the go-to guy for all the computer functions needed for the trip to take place, including keeping track of all the members and their trip needs. He passed away suddenly unexpectedly while out with his families right after Christmas, and we give our condolences to his family. A viewing, a viewing would be held prior to his cremation this Friday, January the eleventh, from two PM to eight PM. There will not be a service, so you can come at any, any time. It's gonna be held at Mc, Mc, McNeely San Pedro Motuary, and it's located at five-seven-zero West Fifth Street, San Pedro, and there's no service. At this time, we'd like to give our heartfelt sympathy to his wife, Lily, and the family members and their loss, and our prayers are with them. So once again, I'm gonna give that address again, is five-seven-zero West Fifth Street in San Pedro, starting at two PM to eight PM. Okay, and with that, we're gonna, we, we, just so people would know, we did counsel a meeting of January the twenty-second, so the next regular scheduled meeting of the Lawndale City Council will be held at six-thirty PM Monday, February the fourth, in these here It is now seven-eighteen, and this meeting is adjourned.